It's. Okay, so we're live. Brittany, are we live?
Uh, we are. I'm just trying to livestream. That might be a little bit.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay. Good evening. This is the. Any of the village. Planning board. We have a couple of items on the agenda tonight, but before we get to them, I'm going to take attendance for the minute taker. We have the planning board members, Seamus O'Rourke, Richard Littman, Ellen Styler, Cindy Goldstein and myself. We have our land use attorney, Teresa Backner. We have for AKRF, Aaron Werner. For Keller Sessions, we have Jerich Tramelli at C E R M E L E. We have our building inspector, Frank Cavallacci, and Brittany O'Neil, our land use board secretary here. Okay. First item on the agenda is the minutes from December 22nd, 2021. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes? I do. The bottom of page one, where it says approval of the minutes, obviously. Or I'm past from the agenda. Which instead of saying the board will review, it should say the board reviewed. It's in the past tense and not the future. And then I have a question for Teresa. Seamus wasn't here for two of the applications. He wasn't here for all of them, quite frankly, but he was familiar with one because of H Z M. And so the minutes say he's either excused or abstained. It's excused slash abstained. It has to be one or the other.
He abstained.
Okay, and then we have to, when someone abstains from something, they have to state the reason why, or that's just when they recuse themselves?
That's just when they recuse themselves. Yeah.
Okay, so we remove the word excused and just put abstained. And the reason abstained is he wasn't familiar with the applications. And that that occurs on in the bottom of page two and the middle of page three, two different books. Anybody else have any questions?
I had one minor comment. A minor comment for consideration. On page four, the note about Miss Eaton noting that clients purchased the property as is. I thought it might be clear related to the trees being cleared. And that was my only comment.
Did you repeat it? Oh.
Near the top of page four.
At the top, right?
The comment, Miss Eaton noted that her clients purchased the property as it is today. I think that that comment was in specific reference to the trees having been cleared and I thought we could be more clear on that in the record.
Okay, so let's wordsmith this. In response to, in response to a query, I don't even know who made the query. In response to a question regarding.
Or perhaps even noted that her clients purchased the property as it is today with the trees previously cleared. But leave it with you.
Why don't we say, I want to get at the, I want to put in the minutes, the fact that it, you know, it's clear cutting. It wasn't just trees being removed. It was with, you know, with regarding the clear cutting of the of the property.
So, so maybe she, the clients purchased the property after the trees were removed? Or after the property was clear cut?
Yeah, instead of as it is today. Right? Okay. We will have questions for them when they come back to us with regards to the purchase and the history of the property, but for the minute's sake, that's a good one. That's very good, Cindy. You got it in a short and sweet. After the property was clear cut. Okay. Okay. All right. Anybody else? All right. I need a motion to have to approve the minutes as amended in four different places.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Richard. Okay, Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Barbara. Okay, this brings us to the application that we have before us tonight. This is a new application. They're coming before the planning board for a site plan review and a wetlands permit. This is the first time coming before us. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to have the applicant present the project to us. We do have some preliminary comments from our consultants, AKRF and Keller Sessions that they can help. The next step for this application would be to go to H Z M for consistency review. Before it can go to H Z M, the planning board has to type it for SECPRA, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We'll discuss that when we get to it and what's required for us to do by state law. So I think that basically sums it up in a nutshell. After they go to H Z M for consistency review, back to the planning board for a full site plan review and a wetlands permit. The wetlands permit requires a public hearing. So when they come back from H Z M, we will have a public hearing. There will be a more complete application at that time and opportunity for the public to speak and weigh in. Tonight, we're not taking any public comments because we really a lot to discuss tonight. So hopefully you'll understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and we'll move forward and begin the process tonight. Anybody have any comments? Teresa, did I do that right?
You absolutely did. Yes.
Okay. All right, great. So we have with us some members of the applicant's team and Brittany knows who they are, so she'll promote them to the panel. We will have the applicant present and then AKRF can just give us a little bit of an overview of their reaction to the application as it stands now. And then Keller Session also did a quick and dirty review of the SWIP, even though there's a lot more that has to come. And then we'll type for SECPRA and move the application along to H Z M. Okay. Right? Okay, Ms. Tyler, are you, oh, I have Beth Evans, okay.
Jacqueline, do you know the owner's name? It's not coming in as what you had given me. Do you know?
It's not coming up as Inez?
No.
I'm on my turn now.
Yeah, I see an Inez Darkangelo.
Yes.
So they're in the waiting room.
Okay, somebody else is not got it. Thank you.
Okay, who's the lead person for the team?
Well, I'll start with the presentation. Everybody, yeah, everybody's in. Terrific. So, good evening. My name is Jacqueline Tyler. I'm with Nexus Creative. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. I do have Beth Evans, Alan Pilch, and Inez DiArcangelo, who is one of the siblings of the trust for the property. So we are all here this evening. Am I able to share screen?
We'll make sure you are.
Yeah, you should be able to as a panelist.
It's disabled.
Hold on one second. Now you should.
Yep, there we go. Perfect. Um, so this evening, we're here tonight to discuss a single family residence located on a vacant lot. So it's a completely new application, as was stated earlier, for a new building. Apologies.
Um, if you're not talking, please mute yourself.
It's my, it's my phone in the background.
Oh. It still stands. If you're not talking, please mute.
Yes, it'll stop in once. Okay, apologies. So we're here, as you mentioned, we do need to attend. Harbor Coastal is our next stop. We're aware of that this evening. So we, as you can see from this overlay, we have an aerial with the yellow is the property line. Everything that you see within this orange up to the cyan is the only buildable area on this lot. Just to give you a little bit of a history, the home, the current owners, again, it's a trust set up from, from their parents. They owned both nine eleven Soundview Drive and nine twenty-one. So both properties were owned. They've been paying taxes on this since they've owned it in the sixties, understanding that it was a buildable lot. When we started the process a couple of years ago, just kind of looking at this, we then discovered the fact that there was a much more extensive review process. So that's where we are here today to start that process with you all. So we attempted to keep as much of the building inside of this area. As you can see, it's a very minor area as opposed to the entire lot. The lot does slope down from Soundview Drive, and I think that was actually mentioned in one of the memos as well, back to the wetlands area. What you can see here, this purple line, that is the edge of the flagged wetlands area. This purple with the cyan line, that is the hundred foot buffer. Just to clarify, because of the way that this wetland wraps around, we, you end up having to draw a radius out from this corner, which is why the cyan line does not match the curvature of the, of the purple wetlands line. So I know in the past when we've shown this to other people, it's been a little confusing, but I, so I wanted to clarify that portion of it. Um, so moving forward, what we, what we are proposing is to, is to bury most of this into the hill as much as possible. Going to jump over to the basement plan for a minute with allowing a walkout basement that works with the grade at the front portion of the, I should say, the, the, the front end of the basement, which is the rear portion of the house. We are also looking at a raised pool platform, elevated pool, so it will not be in the ground at all. So we have held up with all of these piers that you can see. We did that again to try to minimize the disturbance, especially closer to the wetlands area. Trying to be cognizant of staying away from that buffer area. So in regards to that, I know there was a discussion or a mention in one of the memos that came out about the potential to rotate that pool. We're going to take that comment and take a look at that and see on our end what we're able to do with that portion moving forward. We do have to, you know, we worked with Alan in providing the drainage area and trying to keep that away from the buffer as well. So if we rotate the pool, we'll have to look to see if we can fit that in without disturbing the drainage area. So we do have that on our radar to be looking at in the next steps. The first floor, what we are here, just to give you an update, is the fact that we, the building has not been completely designed. There is discussion right now whether somebody within the family will build this or how this is going to be approached, but there, so there's not an actual design to the building. So our approvals will allow there to be a footprint within this building and nobody would be able to build beyond that footprint. Once we decide whoever it may be, whether it's Inez, Inez's son, a cousin, whoever may end up building this in the long run. So we've accounted for our square footage. We are within all of the regulations for all of that. It's strictly just the wetlands portion. We meet all of our current setback, required setbacks. I wanted to flip over to here so that you all can understand that all, all of this is set up on piers, as I mentioned. Again, just trying to really keep the portion of the building up to the front side of the property and as far away from the wetlands as possible. The land does slope down, as I said, so we are, you know, we are significantly further away from the wetlands in regards to both height and distance away from there. Um, and I'm just going to flip through. Again, these are schematic elevations, not really fully understanding the exact interior layout, how that's going to be, but this is where we are currently with our, with our massing. You can see along here, so the wetlands would be in this lower portion of the building. You can see this line is that, that's the hundred foot buffer. And then the massing and the, the elevated pool and deck. We went ahead and had some drone shots taken of the property. For a couple of reasons, we wanted to, we want everybody to have a clear view of what was happening in there because it's hard to see from the roadside. So you can see what's happening with the property here. Like I said, it is a vacant lot. It's been vacant since they've owned it in the sixties. There are some trees that have fallen. Beth Evans is here tonight. She can speak a little bit on the, on the property and the wetlands portion of this. She did go out right before COVID, I believe it was, and, and re-flag everything. So that's been updated. What I would say recently as well. And with that, I'm actually going to turn it over, Beth, in case there's anything you want to, or Alan, that you wanted to add in regards to the property. And then Alan, I can, I have your drawings up that you can walk through the drainage as well.
Beth, do you want to go first? Well, I can go first if you like.
Okay, I'll flip over to yours, Alan.
Sure. Um. Obviously, this is, this is the site plan of, you can also see that the, you know, the, there is a conscious effort to keep the house as far outside of the buffer as possible. And the house is right at the front lot line as well. Just want to point that out. If you go to the next sheet, one oh two, I just want to point out here that what we're doing is, this is really a start grading and utilities plan essentially describes the grading of the site, which is pretty minimal. But most of it really shows the storm drainage piping around the perimeter of the house, picking up the roof drain leaders and conveying that into a stormwater management facility consists of subsurface chambers, which you can see sort of through the, let's see my cursor, but they're located in the, all the northern portions of the site. And this stormwater management facility is designed to capture and treat the water quality volume, which means there's actually no discharge from the, from the roof runoff or driveway during, I believe it's even the one year storm. So what happens, that stormwater runoff gets infiltrated to the ground and renovated. And the water quality is improved. In addition, we also provided peak rate attenuation of the one through one hundred year storm. I understand one of the comments is that it's only to the twenty-five year storm, but we had the numbers for the hundred year storm and it showed clearly that the, that peak rate attenuation was provided. And since, you know, it's in a flood zone, which is the hundred year storm event is the flood of concern. That's why it made sense to at least show that on this plan. And we also just point out, we did have erosion seven patrol plan, which identifies practices to be taken during construction. Was actually a double line of salt fence at the limit of disturbance, which will, you know, help, certainly help to prevent migration of any sediment towards the, the resource into the wetland area. It also shows other features such as a stabilized construction entrance, soil stockpiles and lip protection. So I mean, it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive set of plans. There were comments from from Keller Sessions and are very straightforward comments and we'll be responding to them.
And if I can just pick up while we have this plan up. I originally went on this property in 2010 at the Darkangelo's request. Now, Alan, don't start messing with me. And we flagged the wetlands, which are very abruptly defined on this, on this site. There was actually a stockade wood fence along the wetland boundary. And we used that wetland fence as the, as the wetland line, because it seemed even though the wetland soils are slightly to the, to the east of that or toward the wetland. It just seemed as though it was a good marker of the edge of wetlands. And the thing that shows on this plan are the bedrock outcrops that are prominent in the lower portion of this site. This is what I would call a bedrock controlled site. And so one of my points in, in starting the design of the house for this, one of the things that I emphasize is finding adequate stormwater management area on this site to accommodate a house. And that's what Alan has just gone through. The rest of the site really has been maintained historically as lawn with large trees. Many of those trees, as, as Jacqueline said, had fallen when we went back out in January of last year. Many of those trees have been blown down in the various coastal storms that we've had, but the wetland line remained the same. So that's all I have. If you have questions.
Okay, is the applicant, applicant's presentation complete?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to take down your screen then? Back to gallery view. Okay. In, in preparation for this meeting, our consultants did do a preliminary review of the application. We got memos from both AKRF and and Keller Sessions. Our landscape architect had really not much to review, so she was prepared to write us a memo saying that, but we spared you the expense. So we'll talk about that later. AKRF is Alan Warner's here from, from AKRF. Do you want to just sort of summarize AKRF's initial, initial response to this?
Sure thing. Good evening, everybody. Aaron Werner here from AKRF. I'm filling in tonight for Ashley. I did take a look at the memo. We discussed it before I got on meeting. So just a couple of comments. There was an acreage discrepancy in the short EAF versus the application. So just make sure the application has the right acreage. For number two, I think Beth answered the question, but really just looking to see if that recent delineation was verified in the field by D E C or not. And if it was, you know, indicate that on the plan, just to make sure we have the right hundred foot buffer shown. It sounds like you, you went out in January 2021 and re-flagged it, right?
We did, and I will, I will get D E C to come down to the site. And now that we have a formal application before the village, I will get D E C involved so that you can get a letter of non-determination, non-jurisdictional determination from them. Their adjacent area, as you and the board know, I believe stops at elevation ten on this property.
Okay. Great. For number three, yeah, we, you know, there's a lot in the buffer here. It's currently shown. So we did, you know, we were asking to explore, taking a look at rotating the pool, perhaps reducing the size of the deck. It sounds like that's being looked at. So, you know, we'll leave it at that. Number four in the memo just talks about the fact that this needs the public hearing after it returns from the H Z Z C M process. And then we also included a table at the back end of the memo, just covering all the requirements of code section three hundred, which deals with swimming pools. There's a handful of items in there that weren't included, so we just called those out. I think it's pretty straightforward. You could take a look. Any questions, you know, feel free to reach back out to Ashley about those. And I believe also three forty-two seventy-eight will apply to this site plan review. So take a look at those requirements too. When you come back.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that there's a whole code of what's required for applications for site plan review. Now, there was a little discrepancy here because of the acreage discrepancy in your application, whether or not you needed a site plan. But if it's half an acre, you need a site plan. It appears to be more than half an acre. So section three forty-two dash seventy-eight of our code has a long list of what's required for site plan applications. A lot of it, but you don't have everything. Specifically, we need a landscape plan. We need, oh, and what's not on here because it's new is our tree preservation plan. So you have to indicate all the trees on the property. And if that's a separate section of our code, and I don't have it off the top of my head right now, but you can find the tree, the tree, the new tree law. That's something you have to do. Okay.
We also, you know, we noted that it should be type two for SECPRA. I don't know if you want to talk about that now or reserve that for some portion of this.
When we get to, when we get to the point, we'll, we'll explain why you're many type two, you know, that seems to be a question that people have tonight.
And that's all for me.
Then Erin, just to clarify for you, I know there were some items about the, the pool equipment and all of that in that letter. It will be, those will be minimal. We, we plan on doing a saltwater pool and it's more, we've been describing it as a spool. I'm not sure if people, we, we did one out in Sag Harbor as well. So it's not like a full pool. It's, you know, somewhere in the four foot depth. That's what I call the spool. It's not quite a spa and it's not quite a pool. So, so it's this in between. So just to clarify that for you, so it won't be, we won't have chlorine or other chemicals, et cetera, in that area. Well.
Thanks for clarifying.
All right. So you should look at chapter three hundred to see if this meets the definition of a swimming pool and, and then the requirements in chapter three hundred apply. I'm, I don't, I couldn't tell you offhand what the definition of a swimming pool is in our code. Okay, does any member of the planning board have any questions for Aaron while we have him on the hot seat here? No, we'll move on to our, our village engineer. We have Joe Tramelli here from Keller Sessions. There you are. Okay, so you, your firm did a cursory review of the paperwork so far. I know you started with some comments. And just to let the applicant know, Alan, you and, and Keller Sessions can, you know, communicate freely throughout this whole process. Keller Sessions is also the consulting engineer for all the land use boards, so H, they'll be working with the H Z M as well.
Correct. Great.
Okay, so Joe, do you have anything?
Sure, I can, if you like, I could just go through some of the more poignant ports of the points of the memo. You know, there's a number of minor technical items that I'm sure Alan can easily address. As he already stated, your code requires that they provide water quality as well as mitigation through the twenty-five year storm. They've taken it a step further and demonstrated that they can mitigate through the one hundred year. We do have some barifications and some requested modifications to the study. I'm sure, you know, he can make those and he'll continue to demonstrate that the, the same level of treatment and peak rate attenuation can be attained. We, I guess to start with some clarification, we would like on the coverage areas. Believe the report noted approximately four thousand or forty-three hundred square feet of impervious surface. I know, Alan, you were being conservative in counting the deck towards that, but in reviewing the, the water quality calculations, the numbers seem to differ even further, you know, even discounting the deck. So just some coordination on that, on that end. You mentioned the the infiltration rates in the report, you know, they were assumed for the purposes of the design. At some point, we'll want to get out there and do some soil testing with you, especially given the presence of the ledge in the rear yard. We just want to make sure we have adequate depth for the system as designed. Going back to the water quality. While we understand what it is you're proposing and your, your report does demonstrate no discharge for the one year storm and that you're containing the water quality volume within the system. We didn't see any provisions for pre-treatment of that flow. So we're going to want to, we'll need something in that respect. And then just going back to the deck quickly. Normally, you know, with a deck, it's an open tread and the water is allowed to permeate through the deck. It's not typically collected, mitigated, so to say, or so to speak, but we'd like to see what would be done underneath the deck, given the slopes and the terrain of the property, just to make sure that there is no erosion and that, you know, we don't have sediment transporting down and making its way to the wetland area. So whatever kind of treatment you may propose or, you know, some kind of system, whatever it may be underneath the deck to protect that slope. Couple of technical comments. You did provide erosion and sediment control plan. We, we were thinking, given, again, given the terrain and the excavation, I'm sorry, I don't know if that's my sound making that. I don't know if you're hearing that, but we'd like to see. I know that the, you've done a nice job of trying to minimize the excavation, keeping the foundation somewhat limited. Obviously, putting the pier and deck on piers, but we'd like to have a, an understanding of the level of cut and fill required for the project. It just, it looked like the soil stockpile areas might be a little limited. We just want to make sure that you have enough room on site for that material in addition to. We just want to make sure that you have enough room on site for that material in addition to all the construction that's going to be taking place. And then, you know, with that, with the rose control plans, we thought it would, the site would benefit from maybe a temporary basin for construction. Again, just to protect that downgrade area. And I think maybe a couple of swells on either side of the property line would help to try and just make sure that we don't get any stormwater runoff leaving the site and affecting the neighboring properties. And then we have some notes towards the the last few comments of our of our memo are typical notes related to required maintenance agreements, maintenance for the stormwater infiltration and and components. Yeah, and and the like. So notes regarding the as-built. And of course, you'll need a curb cut permit from the village where you work within the right of way. So unless you have any questions specific to the memo, I think that's pretty well covers it.
Thank you, Joe. Do any members of the planning board have any questions for Joe at this time? The applicant. You guys can go offline and talk offline. You'll be having many conversations, I'm sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any planning board members?
All right. Yeah, let me, let me ask Joe a little bit more about the stormwater challenges on this site because, you know, the slope, it seems to go from 29 feet at the street level down to seven or eight down in the wetlands. So that's substantial. So it seems that that adds additional challenges to handling stormwater, especially when you don't have a lot of width on the site. So and also then having to be careful about the buffer area. So I know there were some suggestions in there, but, you know, in terms of how they would handle it because of the sloping, is there, this part of the project needs a lot more analysis and work to just, you know, get the rest of the information and then proceed with a recommended plan for stormwater.
I think, I think they've done, they have a great start. We just suggested some additional measures because of the terrain. So maybe some, as I said, a temporary sediment basin at the low lying area of the rear yard prior to the the wetland, you know, before that that existing fence. And maybe some diversion swells to channel any sediment laden runoff during construction into that basin. It'll allow it to settle out and filter so that you're only, you know, you've got clean stormwater runoff leaving the site. And there's other measures I'm sure Alan will, you know, do a fine job. Erosion blankets, whether it's mulch, there's, there's plenty of temporary measures you can employ during construction. And we could work that out offline.
Okay, so there's, there's the construction portion, and then there's the after-construction portion. So I guess that's, I guess that's really what I'm focused in on.
So so post-construction, he's already, they've already shown a system of inlets and drains and conveyances to collect the runoff from the driveway from the building roof. As I said earlier, the the water on the deck will be allowed to permeate through. So all the the stormwater from the impervious surfaces will be collected, mitigated, the infiltration system. There is a protected outlet from that because, like any system, at some point, there's going to be an overflow. But they've designed a level spreader for that. One of our recommendations was to just look at that level spreader and maybe widen that a little bit further along the length of the rear yard or the width rather of the rear yard. Where it's shown now downgrade of that level spreader, the the topography seems to channelize the flow again. So we just want to make sure that 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 discharge gets spread out a little more evenly across the rear yard. You know, again, just to try and minimize any any rules or focal focused erosion control. Sorry, any focused stormwater discharges that would lead to potential erosion.
And you're confident that there can be a system worked out with the bedrock that's been identified in the backyard?
That's what the soil testing will tell us. So, you know, based on the soils that are on the site, they vary pretty widely, the 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 tropic soils, you know, they have if they can be well drained soils, they can also have shallow bedrock. And because you've got the exposed bedrock there, we just, you know, we want to make sure that you have the adequate depth and the separation to rock or groundwater so that the infiltration system works as designed. So we'll confirm that with some soil testing. And then, you know, if there are any modifications or adjustments that need to be made, we'll work with Alan offline and make sure that's taken care of.
Oh, okay. This is probably one of the only applications we've seen that doesn't have an extensive cultech system. And I gather that's because it wouldn't work.
Well, they are proposing a cultech system. And we just want to, we just want to make sure that the soils are adequate for it. So there were some, you know, conservatives assumptions made for the design. We just want to verify those assumptions with some field testing.
Okay, and if some, and and maybe I don't want to put you on the spot for this. I just wondered what the material for the pilings would be? What is that concrete, whatever's holding up the the deck and the pool and the back of the house?
We'll, we'll determine those as well. As Joe mentioned, the soil testing will provide that information of what we need to install there.
Okay, so that'll be based on further testing?
Correct.
You'll also have to determine how deep those pilings have also.
Correct.
Right. How many actual pilings are in the plan? I didn't count them. Does anybody know off the top of their head?
I do not, but if you give me a minute, I will try.
We don't need it tonight. I was just, it came up, so I just.
Yep.
I can count them on the plan, or we can do it the next time you come. It's not urgent, right? Okay.
While we were talking to you about, I think, this topic, and help me out here, please. So the cultechs or whatever, that would be a water quality aspect, right? There's the kind of erosion, maybe, you know, quantity side of it and then quality. Because I I assume with the slope, everything is going to end up in Otter Creek, wetland, you know, critical environmental area. So is that, is the water quality covered at this point in the SWIP or will be expanded on?
Yeah, well, it'll be expanded on, but the the cultech system, it provides a dual purpose. It provides water quality, volume and storage for the water quality volume, I should say, as well as attenuation of the larger storm events. So I believe the one year storm, Alan, correct if I'm wrong, there's no discharge through the one year storm. As storms start to exceed that storm level, you do start to get overflow from the cultech system, which is typical. And that's what's discharged to the level spreader. The the key here is the, as far as the larger storms are concerned, they've analyzed the existing conditions compared it to the proposed development. And that peak rate of discharge, when you compare pre and post conditions, either meet or reduced by the design. And he's showing a reduction in all storm events through the 100 year storm. Obviously pending these, you know, details and confirmation of soils. But the, I think the only real component that needs to be added at this point is the pretreatment. So there's a water quality volume that's sized for the development. And there's a percentage of that that needs to be treated prior to discharge to the system, just to protect the the longevity of that infiltration system.
And that, and and I guess the water quality, to whatever degree it's 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 required. But that, you know, that's going to cover the fact that now this is retaining water on a brownfield site. You know, cars maybe from the road, collecting from a roof and all the rest. So that the the water quality aspect is pretreatment and then the cultech, is that what's provided here to address the quality of the water that's ending up in Otter Creek?
I was gonna say, infiltration is a very sound way, if you will, of providing water quality treatment. It also reduces sediment very effectively. And that's, that's the reason why all of the new impervious surfaces, the driveway and the house are, the runoff is being conveyed to the chambers. Or exactly that, just like it's a vegetated site which drains down to Otter Creek. Following this, all the, all the new impervious surfaces are going to be conveyed, the runoff from it's being conveyed to the chambers. So the only thing that's left basically are the, again, vegetated surfaces which will discharge. I mean, that's, that's how it's set up.
Right. And and from a water quality standpoint, if if the soils allow it, infiltration is always the best way to go. You want, you want to try and get as much of that post-evolved rainwater, stormwater back into the ground. So they're, they're doing that quality. The only thing, as we said, that that initial storm, that first flush is what carries all the sediment off of it. And you just want to make sure you collect and treat that before it gets into the system.
Thank you. That's helpful explanation. Here. If not, we can move on. Okay, okay. The applicants can step down from the panel. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
We're not, we're not done.
Well, and I appreciate the discussion. It's really helpful to have that discussion at the front end of stuff, so.
We're trying, we're trying to have more of a dialogue between us and the and the applicants. And, you know, early, you know, an early meeting, more of a preliminary meeting as opposing to plunging right in. And because you you do need to give us more information. One of the things that we, a question I had, maybe we can just throw out here before we do the typing is but we can't approve a concept, you know, we might be able to approve and, you know, defer to our land use attorney, a a house that's not fully like the interior, you know, just has a footprint. But as far as the site goes, a conceptual plan, we can't do a site plan on a conceptual plan. We have to have a site plan that's a site plan, you know, with everything there. And then anyone who builds, whether it's purchased or it's somebody in the family, has to, has to conform to that plan when they build or come back to the village for an amendment to the site plan or whatever. So we, we need to have all the information when, you know, how, you know, the legislative state, what's it going to look like? What is it going to remain? What trees are going to be planted? How are you going to handle the back end of the property? You know, we've gotten a couple of comments from neighbors. And I live in the neighborhood, but not on that side of the of the peninsula. I'm on the other side of the peninsula. And we, I was happy to see the picture of the bald eagle we got, which was roosting in Otter Creek, which is very good. I've seen it up by Rye Lake. I was happy to see it's made its way south. I just saw a news item. There's bald eagle flying around Central Park. This is a good news story. The water's cleaner. The eagles are here. But there's also a lot of other animals that are living in the Otter Creek ecosystem. And, you know, that piece of property now, I'm sure, is habitated, has, there's habitat there for other animals. As the deer are very prevalent in our neighborhood, they're everywhere. So and I live across from another creek and marsh, and there's deer there all the time. So I know there's deer in Otter Creek as well, in addition to the other animals. So those are all things that you're going to have to pay attention to, you know. How, you know, how far does the deck extend into the wetlands buffer? What's under there then? What's there now? You know, things like that, that we can look at for the site and how then the facade in the front of the house. And you're going to have to go to B A R, so there's going to have to be some design for the front of the house and how it fits in with the neighborhood and the neighboring houses and. So. All right, okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. This is a good lead in then to our secret determination, so you all can go off to H C M. Aaron, I don't know, you you already mentioned that you recommended a type two action. Teresa also confirmed that in an email to me with the explanation. So between the two of you, you can explain it to everyone why you're recommending a type, type two action.
Sure, it's pretty simple. I mean, it's in the, in the state regs 17.5C for SECR has the type two list. Specifically, number 11, which deals with single family, two family or three family residences on an approved lot. We have a single family home on an approved lot here, so that automatically meets the definition of a type two action.
So so let me just, the the list that you're referring to is a list of projects or actions that would be a type two action by by law, by state law.
Correct.
This is what's listed in the state law. If you have one of these actions, it's always a type two action.
That's correct. It means no environmental review is required under SECR. No forms need to be filled out. You know, in this case, you have a wetlands permit process, which, you know, gets to a hard look at the issues like wetlands and vegetation and stuff. But it doesn't require preparation of an EAF or EIS. It's a type two and ends there.
Thank you. Teresa, do you have anything that you want to add to that? I thought the paragraph you added in the email to me about how it's against the law to put a type, to make a type two action, anything other than a type two action.
Well, it's, 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 the the regulations provide that if something's listed as a type two action, a municipality can't convert it by adopting a local law into a type one action. So and I went back and I looked in the Village of Mamaroneck zoning code and the other laws. And I haven't seen anything in there that would lead me to believe that you've converted any type two actions to unlisted actions. So you're basically following the state rules. So that means you're, you're bound by them. And in addition to 11, there's also 12, number 12, which addresses swimming pools and minor accessory pertinent residential structures like swimming pools, tennis courts, sheds, things like that. So clearly, the intent that D E C had here was to exclude single family homes and whatever goes along with them typically.
And and so just to avoid the confusion, because I think the neighbors brought it up. And I worked on the 1,000 Taylor's Lane application on HCCMC. And that, that was a type one, I think, action. But that was different because it was a subdivision, not a site plan. Is that the distinction here?
So that is correct. It's, it has to be a single family, two family or three family home on an approved lot. And this has been a lot since the 60s, so it's definitely an approved lot.
So if it was a subdivision, for some reason, it would be, it would be typed differently, but it's not. So that's, that's the end of it. Teresa, may I ask you one more question? On a property like this of about a half an acre, when you're determining the floor area ratio to to figure out how large a house you could build, you include the entire half acre, even the part that isn't buildable because it is in the 50 foot wetland buffer. Is that right? There's no, there's no restriction on FAR based on usability of the total lot.
Okay, here I would have to say, Cindy, that I would have to look at the FAR and get back to you on that to be sure. Okay. Anything, anything having to do with numbers, I like to double check before I answer, so.
Thanks, because, you know, it it seems incongruous for the law to allow, you know, a piece of property where there is a a physical restriction, it's a water or whatever, but if you own the property that can't be built on, it can still be used to calculate a larger structure to be built on what is then effectively a smaller piece of property because, so.
There are other checks and balances. I mean, you know, there are setbacks. And, you know, as pointed out, we do have the review. First of all, H C M will do a consistency review, but we'll also do the review as the wetlands permit. So the, you know, there will be an environmental review. So if the house is too large from an environmental standpoint, you know, that's an opportunity, you know, it checks and bounds an opportunity for us to to ask for changes or something.
Does this application also need a, I guess, the building department issues a floodplain development permit? Is that something required on this kind of application?
Yeah.
Okay. That's Frank's purview, so, but we should have a copy of the application for information purposes.
Getting back to that floor area ratio, our code defines everything excluding underwater lands. That's how it's defined in the code. So I think you take the, you know, the the total of the house divided by the where is it? By the area of the lot excluding underwater lands. That's how it's defined.
Okay, new, new question. What's underwater lands?
I can answer that question. Okay, because a long time ago, I had a client who was getting a subdivision approval. And in that municipality, they did not exclude underwater lands. So he had a pond or a lake on his property, and he was allowed to take the density under the water as part of his lots. So your, your code wisely doesn't allow that to happen. I don't believe wetlands or buffers would be considered lands underwater. So, yeah.
That's correct.
And Cindy, just to touch on the floodplain permit, the, the property does have floodplain on it, but there's no development proposed within it. So while they need a floodplain permit, because it simply touches the floodplain, there's no So while they need a floodplain permit, because it simply touches the floodplain, there's no mitigation that would be required from a floodplain standpoint.
So it's just paperwork?
Right.
That's correct.
All right. But the paperwork has to be done and the planning board should get a copy of it while we're doing our site plan and wetlands permit review. Okay.
May, may I ask what I'm guessing is going to be a pretty maybe straightforward question from what I've heard? Is there no consideration of the proximity to the critical environmental area when you're doing this typing?
There is not. I double-checked that, Seamus, because there are so few municipalities these days that have critical environmental areas. It comes into play if, if it wasn't unlisted or a type one action in the criteria of significance. But because this is type two, you don't even get to that point. Now, it doesn't mean that it's not relevant to the decision whether or not to grant a wetlands permit. But it's just not within the seeker area. It, it'll be in another area. And it's also, as you know, relevant to the coastal harbor commission as well. So.
Okay. Okay. So then the, the opportunity to assess the environmental condition of this property is not through the typing, but will be through the wetlands permit and the consideration of the site. Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. No problem.
Okay. Okay. So then I need a motion to type this as a type two as this question. Let's do Richard this time.
Yeah, well.
Second.
So moved. Second.
All right. Okay. So there's a motion before us to type this as type two for the reasons that were just discussed at length. Let's see. Ellen?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Okay, that's all the business we have tonight. We only have this one application. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second that.
And we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. And have a nice evening.
Good night. Thank you.
Okay. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Everybody. Thank you.